...over our hearts and I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, yes, I have started three quarter. Or it's running for no reason, but, oh, no, it's running. All right, we have four things on the agenda tonight. Normally, what we would go through is our meeting minutes from the last meeting. And we're going to do that as an administrative item, otherwise we're gonna run that to the end of the meeting and it may never get done. Then we'll go through those four things. Just before each fourth, each thing, I will read what the issue is. Someone is coming before this board to ask for a variance from the existing code. That's what we're gonna discuss, that's what we're gonna ask them to point out. I recognize that there is a full crowd here, and we usually don't have it, thank you all for coming, I really mean that. But there'd be an opportunity for comments by each and every or all of you, if that's what you would like. The only thing I will ask is when you come up, tell us what your name is, tell us what your address is. We will record that in the meeting minutes and it'll be done. Then just tell us how you're feeling and I would, what I would say is, keep your questions directed at us, not to the general audience. If you do that, I think we're in good shape. And if you don't, ask me a question, I'll do my best to answer it. All right, so meeting minutes came in this package today. I hope we all had an opportunity to read through them. Does anyone have any comments or a motion to accept them as written, or adjustment to them that needs to be made?
Can I make a motion that the meeting minutes from last month be accepted into the record?
Accepted as written, so all those in favor?
I second it.
Seconded, probably a good point, and then all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. The meeting minutes are accepted as written, thank you very much. All right, just so that the board understands, and I think I passed it out to them all, but if I didn't, we were named the lead agency for the Donovan Street issue from Andrew Bello. So the county has said, you know, we can move forward with that grant approval or not. And just, we have, we have documentation. Joe will make that part of the meeting minutes, I have the letter if anybody needs to see it, and we can go from there. Questions on that? All right, this is going well. We have four things on the agenda tonight. I'm gonna start off with the very first one. This is the zoning board of appeals, we have a meeting of five people. As we go through this, we tend to make a judgment at the end of it. What we're looking for is a vote of majority, or three people at a minimum would vote for it, or three people would vote against it, and it could go in that direction. But it will be, the vote will be kept at this board, but we'll be able to see where we are and hear the comments as we go along. So schedule matters tonight. Four, the first one, a gentleman by the name of Steve Barrett, the owner of 46 Kircher Park, tax ID 0801, or 10-1-24. The application to construct a second driveway to provide off-street parking. Current zoning allows for one driveway. Said driveway shall extend from the street to the garage or to the area on which the conformed garage can be built. Pursuant to the village, and that's what the code says, is that's where it has to end. Pursuant to Village Code 175-3, the applicant seeks relief from the current zoning in the form of two area variance. What they would be is number one, an area variance for the number of driveways allowed. This would move from one driveway to two. And the area variance for the location of the proposed driveway, and that's where they are. Now what this is, I will tell you what I have done, I've driven by it, I've taken a look at this. I looked at the lot, the lot width. Right now, it is 50 feet wide. I don't know what is in the backyard, but I know that there is something in the backyard that's an apartment house, at least that's what it looks like. I didn't dig into the records and see when something was converted to that, this is what I am told. I'm gonna take that as it is right now. There is one driveway, there is no garage. The driveway, as I understand it, if I put this right in my memory, is on the right-hand side as you're standing in the road looking at the property. So the second driveway, if one were allowed, is on the side, on the left-hand side, near the hedges. Driveways are dictated to be 12 feet wide. This is a 50-foot wide lot, maybe plus or minus one or two, if you give me some break on that, but it's about 50 feet wide. If 12 feet of that lot are one driveway, and that driveway is gonna stay in place, a second driveway is now gonna be 24 feet of driveway, or 50 percent roughly, you say 24 of the 50, 50 percent of the lot size. Now, they can tell me whether that's true or not, but it's pretty close, you're gonna have two driveways, because the mandate is that it's 12 feet. Now, that's what I know about that. Anybody else from the board have any comments to make on that? All right, what I would like to know is if Mr. Steve Barrett, the owner of 46 Kircher Park, is here?
Yep.
He is now, all right, very good. If you go over there, just tell us your name and your address, we'll record it in the meeting minutes, and then you can explain to us what it is you'd like to do.
Okay, my name is Steve Barrett, and I actually live in Webster on Stockbridge Road, but I own rental property at 46 Kircher Park for the last approximately 18 or 20 years. And I am, as you described, looking for a second driveway. Just to clarify what you said, the lot currently has two dwellings on it, two houses on it. It has a three-bedroom house in the front, it has a two-bedroom house in the back. They were constructed, we're figuring, my aunt lived two houses down in the 1950s and was there. So I'm figuring with maybe 1940s or something, I might have built.
Okay.
Right now, there is a driveway on the right-hand side that leads back to the back house. That driveway can take two cars side by side, or you can fit a third car over to the side, but then it blocks a third car. So it takes maybe three cars in that driveway. The driveway actually, I measured, is only 10 feet wide. And it goes back, and it's a single lane all the way to the back. And what I'm requesting is to put on the south side of the house, for the front house, a single lane, two-car driveway on the south side. Now, the original plans I had-
Say that again, say, what lane driveway?
A single lane.
Single, okay.
Single lane, two cars, one after another. It would go back from the sidewalk, current sidewalk would go back 48 feet, and I had it as 11 feet wide, because we measured, and there's a large hedge row between the houses that we want to keep. And if we go to the 12 feet, you're gonna, it's gonna be under a hedgerow, right? There's 15 feet from the house to the next lot. So even if I did go 12 feet, I still got that three-foot buffer that I need. Let's see. Right now, you have, right now, the tenants, the combined tenants have six cars, right? So they fit three, three go on the street, or three go down. Usually, in the private factory parking that's across the street, that's usually where they park over there if they're not parking on the street. When they do park on the street, I think it's a safety hazard, because ever since those townhouses were all put back there for some reason, it's like a speedway going down Kircher. When I go to work on a house, I go open up my door, no one slows down for anybody, they fly through that place. And I'm concerned about safety, and I'm thinking that it shouldn't hurt the character of the house having a second driveway or a dedicated driveway to the first house. Let's see, did I hit everything? Yeah, I mean, parking up at the Harmony House, they could park up in that, I looked at alternatives, they could park up at the Harmony House, but like, right now, they got that North 43 banquet going on. There's cars parked on Kircher, there's cars, all, everything's filled. So it's not always, doesn't always have open parking places. And luckily, we've got a lot of business going in there, but it just means more cars and more places for people to park. I think when that house was constructed, and they changed the original garage into a house in the back in the 40s, you know, people had one car, right? Maybe two. Now, there's six cars, you know, where do you put them all? Let's see. So I haven't changed since I don't get the footprints of the house. As a matter of fact, I'm reducing the size of the deck in the back. And that's about it, so I'm requesting a driveway so the people on the front line can place the park further than on the street.
How many apartments total do you have?
It's a single-family house in front with three bedrooms, and in the back, it's a two-bedroom house.
So one rental?
No, it's two rentals. It's two separate houses.
Right.
It's pre-existing, not controlling.
So the front one is single and the back one is single?
Two singles on one tax lot. Yeah, you know, and actually, the houses leading down all have parking lots in the backyard. But there's no way to get, I mean, there's probably, on the north side of the back house, there's probably four feet to the property line. On the south side of the back house, there's probably three feet, right? Because it takes up most of the width, so there's no way to get into that larger area in the back with a parking lot.
Yes, let's take that.
Do you know any history about the back structure? Was it constructed, was it, was it one family that lived on the whole lot?
I think one family lived, well, I think, though the current tenants actually work here, one of them. It's like, so originally, there, I was told, I don't know, I was told that some guy lived there, and his wife got sick, and they put her in a back house, and he lived in the front house, and then, so there was a nurse that lived with her back there. And then, after that, Fritz bought the house, and then he had his mother-in-law living back there, and then they lived in the front. And then I bought the house when Fritz was living there. And since then, the mother-in-law died, and I've had other people in the back house. And before I bought the house, actually, I got from Tom Brer, a, because before I bought it, I wanted to make sure it was a true multifamily house. So I got a letter from the village of Webster that certified that this is a multifamily property, so.
First of all, if we could have a copy of that, that would be good. One way or another, we'll figure out how to do that. That's number one. Number two, you had said that this had, this was a safety concern, parking on the street.
Yeah, I mean, they probably-
Have they done anything with the safety concern? I mean, have we done anything with it? Have we gone to the police, have we let them know?
I don't live there, so I haven't, so, and my tenants haven't complained. But I'll tell you, when I get out of my car, you gotta watch out, because people park on both sides, so you gotta go around. And, you know, I have had one lady come by, laying her horns, I'm getting out of the car, swear at me, and shake herself on it, and he is, I'm going by, and knocks one down, right? So, I mean, I think it'd be fine, a street like it was before. And I didn't pay attention when they built 50-plus townhouses at the end of a small, little old street. I don't know who approved that, but, you know, it just doesn't make sense that they hit such a small street, in my opinion, for 50 townhouses in the back. But this is my way of resolving that for my tenants, would be provide off-street parking. And still, I'm probably not gonna get all the streets with cars off the street, right? So, because I can only fit two cars in.
So there's- Sorry. There's two streets that hold those 50 townhouses?
Yeah, but most of the people that get off the expressway on 250, take a left and go down Kircher, they're not gonna go down the Bay Harbor.
What I see this is that, there's, this is an issue we don't deal with, we don't deal with the traffic thing on the street. If I, I personally would get in touch with the police. I mean, that housing has been back there for at least eight years now. And now you're bringing this to it as a safety issue?
I'm not bringing the issue to you to be guys resolve, I'm just telling you, this is what I, one of the reasons why I want off-street parking is because of the traffic going in there. I'm not gonna go to the police, such is life, no one's gonna move the townhouses, people aren't gonna slow down.
Well, I don't, so I'm not sure that that can't be solved another way, is what I'm saying.
It's just the Webster police are not gonna sit there 24/7-
No, of course not, of course not, because they're gonna try to, but there are things that you could put in the road. There's communities that put things in the road to slow people down.
You can talk to Jake about that one.
Yeah, it'd be up to the neighbors that live on the street to get together, and I don't live there, it's like my tenants are trying to-
My sense of things is that they have, you have to bring the concern that you have also to them, it might be wise, no matter what happens here. The parking in the, for the manufacturing facility across the street, did they have a problem with people parking there?
They don't have a problem, but it's private parking, and at any point in time, they can say, get your car out of here, right?
But I imagine they could, but they, is there, has there been, has they brought to your attention about that?
Nothing's been brought to my attention.
And Harmony House parking lot and those parking there, there are some days that, you know, when they have a department parade, or when they have the winter parade, or what they have today, there's no parking. I mean, I live in the village, I know the same thing happened, because we have those special events, there's people parked on the street, on both sides of the street. I'm surprised that anybody can park on that street, because you're not supposed to park on the street between 2:00 and 6:00 in the morning. There's no parking on village streets between 2:00 and 6:00 in the morning.
Only in the winter.
Most of those are. No, it's, no, that's not true. That's not true, it's all the time. Try parking on the street, you'll get a warning when it stays.
A lot of our parking lots also have no overnight parking.
Right, I was gonna say that.
So legally, technically, they park there if you get to it as well.
Yeah, but there are some places there that they can park overnight.
Yeah, private parking.
Behind this building.
Yeah.
Right, because I used to live in, also there, and my tenants used to park back there.
Yeah, I just think, you know, personally, I think it's a bad precedent here, to put another, you know, to put that much of a driveway on these properties, I just think it's a bad precedent. From my point of view, I'm concerned of granting that variance, because I feel that it's a bad precedent, that other people may wanna do that.
But other people have parking lots that fit six, seven, eight cars.
But if you had, if you had three tenants in the front thing and three tenants in the back, would you have six cars now? Could you have more than the number you have now? Where are these people all gonna park? You're trying to find a place for two cars, right?
No, I'm trying to find a place for six-
What happens if it was subbed down?
Trying to find a place for six cars.
Please?
Six cars. They have four cars in the front, the family in the front, and they have two cars, the family in the back.
So where are they gonna park their other two cars?
Probably over in the factory or somewhere.
So they're not really solving the problem?
I'm trying to alleviate the problem.
Yeah, but you're not solving-
And I'm not gonna have those same tenants for the rest of my life, they move in, they move out.
Yeah, I just, I just find it interesting, you've been there 18 years, and now you're bringing it to us at this time to solve the problem of tenant parking?
The condos haven't been there that long, and to be honest with you-
But it's not the condos-
I haven't really done anything to the property in 16 years, and now I'm trying to improve it.
But you said it's not, that's, it's a safety issue. But you're bringing the issue of parking on the property and not parking on the street. And that was an issue 18 years ago, that you parked the place.
Right, and I'm trying to solve that now. Again, I hear you, you know, I was in the delightful landlord for 16 years, I guess, right?
I'm not trying to beat you up about it.
No.
You know, I'm just saying, I have a hard, I don't, I see it as a precedent by putting that driveway in there, covering that much land with that, I see it as a precedent that I think is bad.
I mean, the tenants that were there had like two cars until they, they got older, their kids got older. I don't, I don't see where it's gonna, where it's gonna be a problem with the neighborhood. I haven't heard one, I talked to the neighbors, we sent 43 letters out, and nobody said that they don't think it's gonna be suppressing the neighborhood or anything. I really don't think, I mean, they're all multifamily houses, all the multifamily house. So, I mean, I hear you, I don't think it's an issue. I mean, it's not really covering 50 percent, it's covering 10 percent for the one driveway, and so it's 21, it's what, it's 40 percent, you know?
What was the question you asked, what's the letter?
Yes, did we give capital to those letters, or?
We have copies, and we have, firstly, we sent them out, it's in our packets. You should have the addresses that were sent to.
The addresses that have been sent to.
I've never seen one phone call speaking negative about it, so.
I sent all the letters, the addresses are there, the layers are there, I talked to the surrounding neighbors. Nobody's, you know, I'm leaving the hedgerow, I mean-
That is good, that is a good thing to request.
For the, for the record, I will comment on the zoning board, but I can see your point about setting a precedent, but also with there being two legally separate houses on the property, that's a unique situation. Something like that would not get approved today, even if they went before the zoning board, it highly doubt. There's so many codes against that now, that it just, it just wouldn't happen. So, I mean, this is a unique situation, so I do wanna give you that part of it. So.
I think we should be addressing the driveway itself, not the safety issue. Okay.
Yeah, because the safety issue, we, as a village, can't really do much about that.
Well, we can, we, by bringing, if we had a concern over traffic safety-
I mean, you'd have to do traffic studies.
We would, well, you would have to go to the police and then ask them to do it. What I had to hear, certificates of occupancy, or other, and I may have the wrong terminology there, but in the city, the city does it. Does anybody do it here? It's the city or the county, somebody does it.
Yeah, I do certificate of occupancy, we search out.
So anybody who's renting, you have done examinations of the property?
We don't do that. We're not the city of Rochester, nor do I want us to be the city of Rochester, because we don't have that time or manpower or monetary budgets to do that. I don't have no time to do it, but now, let alone try to inspect every single COO or apartment or anything that they don't want.
Okay, so we don't do, we don't do inspections, so?
Once they get certificates of occupancy, unless something happens, fire, vacant for over a year, anything like that, we don't do that.
Okay, and that was, that was what I was saying.
The city has their own local law that requires, and it's probably because of the quantity of rental properties within the city of Rochester, which is, that way is a percentage much greater than the village of Webster. They have a requirement that C O's have to be issued periodically, every three years or whatever it is, for rental properties. The village, the town of Webster do not have such a similar requirement.
Okay, and that was what I was, yeah, that's what I was driving at, this is the reason of the city.
Do we, are there any other houses on the street that are rentals?
I'm sure there's others that are rentals, we don't have a list of people.
They're all rentals, all the way down from Main Street all the way to my house are rentals. There's a rental across the street, the first one down, I know, so. Because the first three houses going down, well, no, excuse me, I'm wrong. The first one down is a rental that's two-family. The next one is not a rental. Then one right next door to me is a three-family rental. Mine is two-house rentals, and then there, on the other side, the first white house coming down after the factory is a rental. And I don't know why.
Yeah, there are several of them down there. None that I know of that have two on one property like this, like, so this is a, this is a unique-
It is.
So my concern, and this is that we sent those letters to the houses themselves?
I sent them to the owners.
You sent them to the owners. That's the right answer.
And you did get the list from the ranch?
No, I just wanna make sure if we're sending it to the rental guy, would they care?
Yeah, right.
And I called the owners of the rentals, three of the rentals over there.
Okay, I have a couple of questions on the listing here, and I did notice that you, I don't think, completely agreed with my assessment. But as I look at this plot, it says 50 feet wide. This driveway, with this, I'm looking at 50.12 on the lot, this is, this is part of your-
Yeah, I did a survey then, yeah, it's 50 feet, yeah.
Okay, and 50 is close enough for me.
Yeah.
It also says 12.5 feet from the side of the house to the property line.
Yes.
I don't know how wide your driveway is.
It's nine and a half, because I measured it trying to figure out how to make the other driveway.
Okay, and then what I see is that the second driveway, so that's nine and a half, the second driveway, there's a note on here that says it'll go 11 feet wide. So you got nine, and that's 11, that's 20, even if it's 23 of 50, in my mind-
It's 40, 45.
46, yeah.
Yeah.
In my mind, that's taking up a tremendous amount of property at the frontage. And do we want every single property? Because the potential is, if we approve one, the potential is, everybody else could come in and ask us to it. You know, and we'd have to look at the factors on it. But is taking up 40 percent of the property reasonable in the front? And then you're gonna have to break up on the curbs, or you're gonna do like, you go back, go back 40 years, you got my father out there with you.
I'm getting a curb cut, and I've been working with Jake on that, he's giving the names of people getting a curb cut.
So there is gonna have to be a curb cut there, too?
Yeah, but people do that for a living, so it's like, I'm paying a thousand dollars if I'm gonna cut a curb.
And that'll go back, what I saw was 48 feet?
Right. To fit two cars. Because there's a door, entry door inside the house. I mean, when they built those houses, the entry doors are on the wrong side of the, the entry door on the right was on the wrong side.
At the time they were birthed, they were on the correct side of the house.
Yeah, the left side of the house has the entry door, but the driveway's on the right, so.
At the time they were built, that was the correct way to do it.
Oh, really?
Because at the time that house was built, you didn't want what the horse left in the driveway tracked into the house.
Yeah, because we're putting the driveway as a broken-up sidewalk right now, it's just all broken and broken-up sidewalks and that kind of thing. I do have, I do have a comment, though, on what's the feasibility that people don't have a second house in their backyard, are gonna come and ask to put a driveway in this other side of their house? I mean, what's the feasibility of that, I mean, what's the probability?
I have no idea, but what come in place is, you know, garages on another side of the property, we have been approached with that, and you would have to, I personally, I think it looks awful. I think having two driveways for one piece of property, or taking up 40 percent of the frontage or the total property, you're not talking about the width, that's a lot.
I personally, would rather see a driveway present than having cars lining up and down the road to keep them to the house.
Okay, fair enough, I understand.
And plus, on the street that isn't designed to have cars parked on it, so.
Did I hit something here? I'm gonna let it go at that point.
I mean, and also, going behind the houses, I mean, I've got a nice backyard behind the house, but I look at gravel parking lots all behind my house, my house, of everybody else, that totally flood it all the time, too. So it's like, and nobody's ever questioned that, so.
And just for clarification, you know, 175-59 accessory structures, you can only, only one garage is allowed. You couldn't come in and ask to build two garages.
Fair enough.
So without two garages, why would you need two driveways? And this is unique, this is probably the only lot- And this is unique, this is probably the only lot in the entire Village of Webster that has two houses on a single lot.
You're absolutely correct, because I sold this house like ten years ago, and they went to the bank to get a mortgage, and to get a mortgage, you have to have comparables, and they went to three banks, and three banks said that there's no comparables of two houses on one lot, so I couldn't sell the house, and the guy couldn't get the mortgage, and I can't sell the house to anybody that needs a mortgage, because there's no comparables, and you have to have three comparables within five miles, sold within six months, and there's no other one.
There's a, there's a two, two, two house lot down here on South there, on the west, on the east side, there's another one down between here and Sanford Street on the right side.
But they have to sell within six months to be a comparable.
Well, I'm, it's fine, but I'm just saying there are other houses here than yet.
Yeah, I know there are, but they do sell, they don't wanna sell all, sell one, so I'm stuck with this house until someone wants to pay me cash for it, or if they ever want to sell it, so.
Fair enough. Anything else you would like to, or anything else, anyone on the board wants to direct completely to the applicant? All right, anything you want to direct with the board?
No, I just hope you guys would consider it, because it makes it much more convenient for the tenants, and, you know, I do have a couple of young ladies that live there, and, you know, it's not really nice for them, you know, night to walk, you know, from the park, parking lot down to the house all the time, so, you know, that's another concern that I have, that it would be nice to have parking next to their house, you know, and also there are other houses with two driveways, and I mean, Jake's house has two driveways, I mean, it's like, so, you know.
Two streets. I believe he goes to two different streets, doesn't he?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, right.
And two driveways may be true, and it obviously is, but you also have to look at the overall size of the lot. Your lot is narrow. If I'm, I'm looking through just the code book here, and the code book says you're supposed to have side yards, and when you have two family dwellings on a lot, the side yards are supposed to get wider, you're covering all your side yards with driveway, you're making your side yards smaller. So, this is, and obviously this is a very unique situation, it's, but.
And this is a non-conforming pre-existing property, remember, so.
Yeah, right.
Without with one driveway?
With one driveway, then one house can be yourself.
I mean, in the grand scheme of things, you look at this and you say, this is trivial, but it's not.
Why is it not?
Well, there is, there is always the precedent setting, because somebody down the road's gonna come back and say, well, he got it, why can't I have it? But every request, obviously, is judged on its merits.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know, I mean, most of the people don't have a house in the backyard, and if they were gonna have a driveway, they would extend like everybody has, parking lots in the back, so I hear what you say, there's always a chance, but I really doubt someone's gonna come and say, well, I'm gonna put two driveways and spend a thousand dollars for a curb cut, and all that money to put when they can just extend their backyard with no permit or anything, so. And I, and if it doesn't get approved, you know, I just, you know, I don't, it's just unfortunate for the tenants that, you know, they can't have a driveway, they have to walk all the way down the street, so, because their house is pre-existing, so.
How about going all the way to the back of the lot and make parking lots for six cars?
Um, I, like I said before, there's, there's four point eight feet on one side of the house, and the other side of the house is, oh, there's probably two feet, because if you look at the survey map on the back house, the south side has like two feet, and there's four point six feet on the north side. So, I have all that area in the back, I would love to have a parking lot back there like everybody else does, but I can't, because I can't get a driveway back to the back. I mean, that would be the perfect thing, because all of the, all the houses coming down, they have parking lots behind them.
So, the measurement of the covered walkway is what?
Uh, that's gotta be, that's gotta be at least eight feet. So, that would leave, what, that would be three feet on the other one? And that's covered walkway, that's actually a continuation, the roof is a porch to go its own way down, but the, it's, um, the cement floor of the covered area is only this is like ground level, so that's why they call it walkway, because you can just walk straight through.
All right, other questions? Okay, any, anything else, any comments, or the things you'd like to, to make sure that we have at least at our table?
That's it, I mean, I'm just, I think it would be a convenient thing for the tenants, and I truly think it'd be, it causes a safety issue having such a small spree parking on two sides, maybe make that one way all the way around, I don't know, and also it's a safety concern nowadays, walking from your car from parking lot to a house, so I'd like to alleviate the concern, but if you guys don't wanna alleviate the concern, you know, I'm not gonna feel best, I'm, since I tried.
Understood, thank you.
Yeah, so would you guys make the decision, now, or drive to the end of the meeting?
We will have a vote at the end of this meeting.
Oh, so I gotta wait?
No, we're gonna do it right after, so right, this is over, but right now, I'd like take here, if the public has any comments or against or otherwise, if they'd like to make.
Oh, okay, so you're gonna make the decision after the public?
Yes.
Okay, I'll look at your house looks.
No, no, you just, you get your say, we get our say, they get their say, then we will.
I was just wondering if I could spend the night here.
You're gonna know some of that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You wanna sit down?
Who would like to speak on behalf of their own particular interest? Um, I've got one gentleman who's gonna come up right now.
Richard Lawler, Twenty Oaks Street currently, I grew up at one eighteen Kircher Park. You're puzzled over that number, but there used to be a whole lot more houses on Kircher Park, and it was a through street. It wasn't two little streets, it was a through street, until the state came along and condemned nine houses, so they could build a road, for forty years after they originally planned it. Uh, I would say I'm against it. I grew up on that street, I'm familiar with all the houses, even the vacant lot is down there, which I think is on the agenda tonight, uh, and you're taking what unfortunately in some places down there become the lower end of town, and lowering it further, in my opinion. To do this to that, what was a very quaint, nice neighborhood, to downgrade it that much more is a trai, is a tragedy, in my opinion. That's only my opinion, it's the board's decision, I know, but, and I hate to see that precedent, I live in Uptown now, and still on a very narrow lot, and to put on my street, there are some drive, houses that only have shared driveways, and to put more driveways on the street so we get more cars seems like a problem, and you say that one tenant has four cars, it must be an awfully big family.
Four adults.
Uh, three bedrooms, four cars, I think they have outgrown their house.
If I, if I may say, it's not up to you or anybody else in this room to say who can or how many people live in a house.
No, I'm not, I'm just saying, that's my opinion.
I appreciate that, Aaron, but let's, let's keep everything coming over here, let's not have, let's not have different members giving their, so, and my own comment is, let's keep, let's keep our comments to four or against the variance.
I'm, I'm against it, because I think it would have a detrimental effect on the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else with thoughts or comments? All right, Jim, don't talk about this at all, huh? All right, we'll close that portion. All right, so what we have, go ahead, I put that question to Chris. Is that possible? Hmm. What's that?
Okay, so the back property has a covered blacktop walkway on the south side of the property, right?
Cement.
Cement?
Yeah.
I'm gonna throw this out there, because Larry gave it to me.
Here comes the bus.
What if, or was, would there be a consideration to actually put parking behind the, the back property, because you have a lot of backyard, by converting that covered concrete walkway into a drive lane that is accessed from the front on the existing driveway, through the existing blacktop area between the two properties, to get behind the second property?
The, the entire covered, the entire roof cover would have to be removed, and it's part of the construction of the house, you know, the, the joists comes down all the way to the end there, so.
It's also limited to eleven feet two inches, correct?
Right, and the ten, the nine and a half foot driveway have on the other side of the house, tenants tend to scrape the house with, right, so I have a problem with them, because there's a bay window there, they hit the bay window when someone comes with a truck in the existing driveway, so I'd be a little nervous that they'd have to, because they'd have like, I'd have to keep eleven feet up against that, the front house, so they'd have to squeeze by the front house and then squeeze by the second house, right, so, and I don't know how, I'd have to get an architect to see how you would take that roof off, because you'd be open to the attic, right, so.
So, the posts in that, or support posts is what you're telling me is?
Yeah, for the roof, yeah.
All right, for the, for the extended awning that comes out over there?
So, you'd have to take the whole thing.
Understood.
All the way up off, you know, so, I thought about that.
The backyard is, for all intents and purposes, is landlocked, can't get it.
Exactly.
Can't get there from here, huh?
Right, unless the dentist's letting you get in from the back. Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, it's unfortunate, it's pre, you know, like I said, back when they built it, you know, no one ever thought that every adult over sixteen would have a car that lived in a house, right, so it's like, things change. Thanks for the, uh.
Other thoughts or comments?
So, is there actually a garage in the back house?
Yes, doesn't really fit our, doesn't really fit a nowadays car, would fit a Model T.
Twenty C Y by, I don't know how deep it is.
What, the garage?
Yeah.
Well, actually, the garage has, because the back house is, is on a, well, it's not a, it's actually got no basement, but it's got a crawl space underneath it, so the utility room is in the garage, so, so even if you did pull in, you're not gonna be able to pull in all the way, because the utility room sort of takes up a little bit.
Any other questions, comments, thoughts, focus on the board. All right, then let me close that portion, and I'll open it up to, to what is before the board. Right now, before the board, according to the scheduled matters sheet, there are two, two variances in front of the board. Number one is the area variance for the number of driveways allowed. Driveways allowed, there's, I can tell, are one. And an area variance for the location of the proposed property, I'm not sure how that gets in, but is that because it goes too close to the edge line?
No, according to what he's saying now, it's, he's gonna stay away from the property lane to three feet, right, so he's not even gonna end up encroaching on it.
I'm gonna be four feet away.
Like originally thought, so.
It's because, it's because the, the rather strange definition of a driveway, and the village code says no more than twelve feet wide, well, it says, uh, an area from the street to a garage, or to an area on which a conforming garage could be built, well, at the end of that proposed driveway, you couldn't put a conforming garage, so you need a variance to allow the driveway to end at a spot where you can't put a conforming garage.
And it would be nine feet wide then, and that would be running right up to the side of the house?
It's gonna be eleven feet, because it's fifteen.
All right.
Interference of the side house, you know, as, as we're talking of their options, I mean, I could continue the pavement to the back driveway, and you have a circular driveway all around the house, and then it'd be one driveway, but with two entrances, but I didn't wanna pave that much. Because if you look at the survey map, between the back and the front house, it's all pavement, so. So, if I went to another.
And that's because it went into a garage at one point?
Yeah, they made a basketball court, right, there's a basketball net back there, so.
All right. All right, so to the board here, what we have in front of us, we still have two variance requests. One is for the driveway, and allow a second driveway on the property, so that would give us two. And the second one would be, as it's written here, is area by and variance for location of the proposed driveway, and that may or may not exist still? Now, that's a question.
So, what, said, were you gonna say that again?
Says number two, area variance for location of proposed driveway.
I think that's what Don was saying, because there can't be a garage built from the back, so that would still say.
Okay. So, comments or thoughts from any member on the board, you just wanna move this into a vote?
Well, if you're, if you're thinking about moving it into a vote, you gotta take care of Seeker first.
Uh, the Seeker.
Which, it's a type two action, because you're talking about an area variance on a single family dwelling. But you still need to move and declare that.
Does that have any variance or any, any, any play on the variance being requested or not?
We can't move on.
What do you mean? In other words, if the variance, like, let's take it one way, if the variance is denied, then this means nothing.
Well, you still, look, Seeker applies to actions.
Okay.
Of municipal entities. Your action is either to approve or disapprove, so even if you disapprove, you still have to take a Seeker motion.
And this is for type two?
And it's type two because it's the, the granting of an area variance for a single family, two-family, or three-family residence is defined in the regulations as a type two action, which by definition means no significant environmental injury.
So, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion for a type two action under Seeker with no. with no significant environmental impact. Okay, we have an action on the table for type 2 with no, uh, no significant environmental impact?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have it seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None, all right. So, we've taken care of that. We still have to go back to the variance. It's been placed in front of us to grant two variances. One is the area variance for the number of driveways allowed and the second one is the area variance for the location of the proposed property because it doesn't allow for a garage to be built. And if anybody wanted to bring that forward, it can be brought forward as a motion to approve. It can be brought forward as a motion to deny. I'll make, I'll make a motion to deny that request. All right, we have a motion on the table to deny the request as it is written and as it's been explained. Do we have a second to that? All right, I don't know if there's any way that I can approve that or not approve that as chairman? All right, we haven't had any, we haven't had anybody make a second motion on that?
Then the motion dies for lack of a second.
Okay, so your, your answer was, no, I can't.
Not unless you want a second, not unless you want a second.
That was what I was asking, because I didn't hear anybody else do it.
You can, you're, just because you're the chairman, you can still make a motions and second motions, you know?
All right, you don't have to take that just because you're the chairman. I'm going to second that motion on the table. So, we've got the motion on the table to deny the request. And we'll take a vote on that. All those in favor of that motion? Aye. All those not in favor?
Aye.
Did you go not in favor?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so that motion is not passed to deny.
So, that means we have to make a motion to approve?
Well, that would seem to be the next logical step.
All right. All right. This is, I'm, I'm really struggling with this. But all things considered, the uniqueness of this request, I can't see any other options. So, I will make a motion to, to approve the request for variance to have a second driveway built on this property.
Okay, we've got a motion on the table to approve the variance for a second driveway to be built on this property?
I'll second.
All right, we have that seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
We have three in favors. Those opposed?
Opposed.
Aye. So, two opposed. Okay, your motion is passed.
Thank you very much.
All right, now, the, that, we have two variances going here. That was for the second garage. This variance is for the location of the proposed driveway. In other words, it runs from the road to the back of the house where a garage cannot at this time be built and it's not approved in this as it is done. Do we have a motion on the table to approve that?
I make a motion for the approval of variance request for the location of the driveway as a...
Okay, we have a motion on the table to approve the variance for location of proposed driveway?
I'll second.
Seconded, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Three in favor, all those opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. All right, both have passed.
Thank you very much.
You betcha, good luck.
Yep.
All right, coming up second on our is Sherry Lacada, the owner of 146 Park, Curd, Curtis Park, excuse me. The applicant seeks to attach a front porch pursuant to 175-11C. The required front rack setback is 40 feet. Uh, and it is consistent with the neighborhood. All right, the applicant proposes to build a porch with a front yard setback of 30 feet. We're actually looking for a 10-foot variance. The applicant therefore seeks relief from the current zoning for a 10-foot area variance on the front setback of the porch. So, in other words, what this means is from wherever it's measured at the front, they wanna go back 30 feet, not 40 feet, as would be where the code would request it. Um, this is, that's the variance that's requested. The property is zoned R1. Is Sherry here? There you go, get up and tell us about this. Or, I'm sorry, your husband?
This is the architect.
Okay, your architect, I apologize.
Good evening, my name is Stu Chait. I am Sherry Lacada's architect and agent in this matter. Um, we have submitted as part of the variance package a site plan showing the setbacks both front and side. And they also show the existing 41 and a half foot front setback for the existing house. Also included is a floor plan layout showing the proposed porch. Two elevations, one from the front, one from the side. And I believe a rendering of the porch was also included. It is our belief that the design of this is in keeping with the house and with the character of the neighborhood. The age of the house is such that when these houses were built, that the 40-foot plus or minus setback was a constant based on how things were done. There have been a couple of porches that have been built in this neighborhood in the past few years, so we don't believe that we are setting a precedent only following that. Be glad to answer any questions that you might have. Um, I believe the supplemental is fairly self-explanatory.
Very good, thank you. Any questions from folks here? Well, you've got the architect standing up there.
So, the current setback is 41 feet?
41 and a half, to be exact, yes.
And you're asking for 10-foot, um, front over?
Normally, 30-foot would be the setback. Um, the porch itself is 10-foot deep, but then I've also included the 1-foot overhang for the roof, just to be safe.
You don't, you don't have to do that, okay.
Every, every town is different, so I just, I wanted to be safe with it.
Any questions?
Yep.
So, we could go with the 10-foot?
You said we want to be safe in case they spray a little bit or whatever. I mean, we're only going with 10-foot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And this is very similar to the one that was approved last year, two days ago.
Oh, I'm a staunch advocate for front porches, so you have no problem with me.
So, is it illegal if I use these plans if I wanted to do this myself?
You gotta come with me first.
No questions?
No questions.
No, I'm good.
No questions, all right. Anyone from the public wanted to have comments or against this?
We're pro points.
Thank you, very good, okay.
Thank you.
All right, what we've got is we have a variance request on the table. I'm willing to ask you to do the Seeker first, but, but it's going to be, did we say 10 or did we say 11?
We're requesting 11, I think that's fine.
All right, so we're requesting 11 to make that setback 30 feet. Understood? Okay, and then the Seeker review?
It's type 2, is it, yes? All right, make a motion, uh, this is, be considered a type 2 action with regard to Seeker?
Okay, we've got a type 2 action on the table?
I'll second.
We have it seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None. Very good, now let's go forward with the 11-foot setback on the front porch at 146 Curtis Park. I think we get, we did that.
Public, public comment, no?
No comment, okay.
No, no yea, no nay. All right, I'll be a big mouth. I would like a foot forward motion for approval for 11-foot variance for a front setback to be whatever, plus or minus 30 feet from the road.
Okay, we've got a motion on the table for 11-foot setback variance to, to bring the front porch to 30 feet from the, from the road or curb or the, wherever we're speculating from. We have that seconded?
Second.
We have a second on the table, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None, very good.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with your porch.
Thank you.
Get a hall of fame, we'll take care of the permits. Any other questions? Just get a hall of fame, we'll take care of all the permits already.
Yeah, I've gotta finish the drawings now.
Yep.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, third thing on the item is we have Courtney and Jonathan Calhoun, Calhoun Building Company, LLC. The owner of 87 Curtis Park, text number 080.110-1-42. The property is zoned R2, on the same road to the first one that was on the, on the table. The applicant seeks to build new construction of a single-family home on a pre-existing building lot. The required setback is 40 feet per village code. That's pretty standard, we should all know that. Um, 175-15C, it is consistent with the neighborhood average of 26.86-foot setbacks. So, in other words, that's a shorter setback than we're, than we're normally dealing. The applicant seeks to build a new house with a front yard setback of 25 feet. In other words, we're violating that or varying that by one feet, um, 1.86 feet or something like that. Uh, the applicant therefore seeks relief from the current zoning for 1.86-foot area variance into the front setback. The variance needed per village code lot size required is 9,600. In other words, R2 is 9.6. Um, variance per village code, lot size, and that. The applicant's proposed lot is 9,240 square feet, which will require an area variance for the lot size of 360 square feet. The variance per village code, lot width of 75 feet is required. 60 feet is proposed, uh, requiring a 15-foot variance. So, I get number three variance all on my plate. What I couldn't get was the applicant's proposed lot is 9,240 square feet. The R2, 9.6, means you're going to need 360 square foot of a variance to build in that lot. In other words, if that house was already there, that wouldn't be an issue for us. But it is not there, it's gonna build in that lot, um, a new house, and therefore they're looking for that. And the 15-foot, um, the width variance. Who's, who's making your request here? Come on up, tell us who you are, tell us where you're at and what's it like here?
Could you be, I'm Jonathan Calhoun. Um, the first variance there seemed a little bit off to me. I don't, I, it wasn't my intention to bring the house closer to the road. So, I feel like that's something, uh, something we could certainly work with. Uh, what I can't work with is the, the fact that the lot is already 60 feet wide and, and the village now has requirement for 75-foot, foot width. So, if the lot coverage is an issue, the house isn't built, the house isn't fully designed, that wouldn't necessarily be a problem. But I would like that variance to stand as proposed because I'd like to build it just a little bit bigger. I think it's only about 1,600 square feet is the proposed house size. It's still just a three-bedroom, two-bath house. Um, nothing certainly larger than anything else that's on the road now, so...
Tell me off the top of your head, was there a house that existed on that lot prior to this?
There absolutely was, yes, yeah.
Thank you. I just wanted to get that out.
Okay, all right, yeah.
It was a hoarder house.
A hoarder house, got it. All right, so that lot then is 9,200 and, uh, and out 60 square feet or something, or 40 square feet? 9,240.
Okay.
All right, on R2 is 9,600. So, you're looking for a variance to build on that lot that doesn't exceed 9,600 square feet, that doesn't even beat 9,600 square feet, which is the minimum.
Correct.
It's under that by 360 square feet. You're also looking at the lot being 15 feet more narrow than it normally would have been.
Correct, yes.
Okay, and that's because that's what the lot is right now.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. And relief from the setback variance of 1.86 feet would give you 25. I assume there's plans already drawn, which will show that 25?
I, I am, but I think the intention was to match the setback of neighboring houses and, and so that is perhaps why the site plan engineer put it at 25. But if it's not the case, then I don't, I don't wanna bring it forward from what the house, the neighbor houses are.
What would you like it to be?
Uh, the, the minimum setback, uh, 26 feet, I think you mentioned?
It's 25. Doesn't he want a 15-foot?
Yeah, it's on the side, no, no, in the front. The numbers, the numbers that are there, we averaged, and when I say we averaged, Jake, with his ass in the brain, um, helped with the numbers, we averaged what all the houses in that neighborhood were, and that's what it was. So, he's staying within what all the neighbor houses are basically, so it's not unreasonable for that. It's just a lot of numbers that really didn't need to be...
So, for an R2, what does it say specifically?
If he wants, if he wants the front setback to be 26.86 feet, you don't need a variance. Because again, the code, it's, it's either, it's 40 feet or, uh...
The average of the distance.
Right, if there are principal structures fronting on the same street within 300 feet of either or both of the sides that the front yard depth shall be equal to the average of the setbacks of the nearest of such structures. So, Jake went and figured out the average of the nearest structures is 26.86. So, if you want to do 26.86, you don't need a variance. If you want to do 25, you need a variance.
Let's call it 26.86.
All right, then eliminate, eliminate a variance.
It's a pretty big lot, yeah.
Yeah, you could push everything back just a hair for now and not worry about the rear setback.
So, we need a variance at number one for the lot size?
Yep.
And number two for the width?
Correct, yeah.
That makes it easier.
Don't we need, doesn't he need a third variance for the side yard setback? Because he's proposing 6 feet and it should be 10? So, he needs a fourth of a variance?
No, it's the distance that are equal to both side yards.
Total.
He's gonna meet, he's gonna meet, he'll meet both sides.
It's a to, it's a total width not less than 16 feet.
Ah! Sorry.
Just with the side.
And the minimum, and the minimum not to, not to be less than 6 feet.
Right.
Yeah.
Anything else you want to bring before this board here quickly?
I don't think so, I'm here to answer any questions you guys have.
I guess I'm curious, is it in the architectural style of the house? Yeah.
You should have a couple elevation for, for preliminary.
Have you already sold this house?
No. Would you like to buy it?
But it's up for sale, right?
No, no, no.
What are you asking for?
Uh, it's not, it's not actually up for sale, no.
I would... What's the, what's the, what's the... What's, what's the...
Should be the west elevation.
So while they're looking at that, if they approve everything, there's one thing I do want to put on record. There's a tree that's not in good shape on the south side. One big section is already came down, so I will require that whole tree to come down.
How close is it to the property line?
I don't know exactly. It's, it's very close to the property line. Yeah. But...
I wouldn't leave it.
Yeah, because you, if that other section fell and crushed your house anyway.
Yeah, is that worth it?
But I just want to put it on record that I will require that tree to come down fully.
Yeah.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
This is a building thing, I'm just confused. On your, on your, on this plans and schedules, your second floor is 31 feet in the front? And, and it's 22, but the back is, looks like it's 21 or something like that.
There is a cantilevered section.
Is that what it is?
Over the front, the front door area, so that it could be where disparity is.
Yeah, okay.
And keep in mind, these are preliminary. We must file a lot on architectural until we have approval on the lot.
Yeah, I just, I just didn't see where it said 21, that's what I said.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. These plans are...
Other questions or comments?
Now we just haven't had a single new build in a long time, so it's good. Be nice to that street.
Yep. I agree.
Okay. Thank you very much. Unless you've got questions for us?
One thing I did notice on the floor plan, you don't have, or I don't see, a coat closet at the entry.
It's a tight, it's a tight floor plan, so there's, there's plans for some built-ins there that aren't necessarily, closets take up space, so we're naming that some up. Thank you for your, thank you for the comment.
It'd be like my kids were just throwing.
Seven foot.
Yeah, the giant bucket.
All right, anything else?
No.
All right, thank you. Anyone with other comments? Yes, ma'am.
Well, I live at 58 Kircher Park. My name is Mary Beth Bechers, and my husband Val, we live at 50 Kircher Park. And I came to the meeting because I'm curious what this house will look like. And my concern is that it should look like it fits. So I'm wondering what the style is.
We're going to call it farm pileup.
This is what, this is what we were provided with.
The face is west. The little face is west.
Looks wise, I think it'll look pretty close to what the neighborhood is. It's not going to look like a little mini mansion or Taj Mahal type of thing. I think it'll, I think it'll be fitting.
Well, the, will you be approving like the design when, like final assistance? You're not, you're not sure yet, right? Or is that going to be the design?
That is going to be the design. The things that will change are interior to that and wooden.
Okay. Well, one of the things when I look at that, that I see, is the roof comes down and doesn't seem to have a very big overhang. And the houses on the street don't look like the houses on Metromount. The overhang is different. So I would, so it wouldn't really look like it fit in, it would look like a new. So just some little things. It doesn't have a front porch, or something that was a front porch, so. Those are my concerns.
Thank you. Any other comments from anyone in the audience? All right, so what we have on our plate is a request for three variances. I got a feeling we're only going to do two of them because we're going to go to 28, or 20, 28 feet, 28, 25.
26.86.
26.86, or something like that, yes. So we've only got two on. One is a variation from the R2, or variation to the R2. The minimum was 9,600. This one's 9,240. The second one is a width variance of 15 feet to go from what's required is 75 down to 60. And that's, as I understand it, just confirm that with me. That's because the lot is 60 feet right now.
Correct.
So you can't do anything with that unless people sell you seven feet on both sides. I don't think we're going to go that way.
I don't think we are.
So you're just going to build on the existing lot that had a house that no longer exists and some of the material foundation looked like it was sticking up or a little bit of it, something was. Okay.
Full basement?
Across base, it's going to be proposed.
Questions from folks on the board? I want to give you time to finish that. You're done?
Yep, just real quick while they're looking at that. It's a little small, so I can't... Anyway, where's the mechanical room then, if it's set up whole basement?
It's going to be, the HVAC is going to be mini splits, and so you can, you can eliminate a forced air furnace that way. And then I can sneak in a low water heater underneath the stairs, so. It's meant, or, or put them in the crawl space, actually.
Yeah, like an on-demand type one?
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Okay. And also for the record, I just want to point out, our attorney pointed out actually that some of these elevations, just the direction is wrong. The east elevation, it says east front elevation, is actually the west front elevation. And it does have a front porch on there. So just the, he's just gotten backwards. It says east front elevation, which is actually the west front elevation. Make sure it doesn't hit. Anybody mix up?
Okay. So do we have time to think about the seeker review? And how we thought about that and felt on that, and are we willing to support the motion?
Again, these are area variances for a single-family house, so it's a type 2 actually.
Okay, I'll make a motion for this request to be type 2, we got the seeker.
Okay, we have a motion on the table that it's a type 2?
Seconded.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? There we go. So we've got a five-nothing per view on that for a type 2. Now somewhere in the meeting minutes, what I would say is that application number one, which is the applicant application to 1.86 feet, so that takes it back to 25, is no longer on the table. It's been withdrawn by the applicant. Is that correct?
Correct.
That's been withdrawn. Okay, so what we have then on the application on the table is two other variances. One is a variance needed for village code 175-15A, lot size, the minimum requirement R2 is 9,600 square feet. This is 9,200 and somewhere around here, it's 40. There it is. So it means we're going to build a house there that's below the minimum variance in space, all right, the lot size. And then we have a lot width, which is 60 feet. So the variance here is 15 feet because normally, building in an R2 neighborhood would require 75 feet. So we're seeking a 15-foot variance for the lot width. Correct. So why don't we go back to the first one, which is, and we're making notes in the, in the meeting notes, that you withdrawn, the first one, to leave it at 28.6 because that's what the, or 26.82 or something, yeah. Because that's what Jake came down to with you with the average, correct?
26.86, correct.
That's what I said, isn't it? It is, trust me.
No front, no front setback variance required.
All right. So we're down to two. Variance needed per village code, lot size is required to be 9,600 square feet. On this one, we have 9,240 square feet to keep it in the R2 field. Do we have a motion to approve that?
I'll make that motion.
So we have a motion to approve 360-square-foot relief for the lot size?
Seconded.
We have a seconded on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None. All right. Second variance that we're going to go to is the one from 175-15A, aye. The lot width of 75 feet is required in an R2 neighborhood. This one is 60 feet as an existing lot, and he's requesting the variance of 15 feet because the only thing I can think of is that the original one didn't have it because it was built before the code went into this act. Do I have anything on the table for that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for the variance, consideration of a 15-foot lot size, or for the variance for the lot size being 60 feet, where 75 foot is required by code. So he has control of 15-foot relief in the variance.
Okay, we have a variance on the table. Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Good luck. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right. Last one on the meeting agenda here for tonight is we have the Donovan Business Flex Park, preliminary and final site plan approval held over from the February meeting. Costic Engineering on behalf of the Donovan Flex Business Park, under contract for three parcels, totally 8.59 acres north of New York State Route 104 and south of the former railroad right-of-way. The property is zoned G1, General Industry, GI, tax number of, I'm not going to read that, it's there. The applicant seeks preliminary and final site plan approval to develop 8.59 acres for a flexible business park pursuant to 175-24-25. So what we also have, and just so that everybody is aware of it, this was sent over to the county. The county came back to us and said, we, uh, thank you. Says, this was a note back to Mayor Barth, it says, "We are in receipt of your request to be the lead injury, lead agency under seeker in connection with the environmental review of the above-referenced project. Partners in planning and developing a public health were consulted, and Monroe County hereby consents to the Village Board of Wep, Board of Appeals of Village of Webster, serving as the lead agency under seeker. Any copies significant should be sent to Anna Talsen." Essentially, we had some concerns on this last time. This has been, we have been designated as the lead agency to address the seeker issues. So who do we have here who wants to go over this? Thank you.
My name is Mike Ritchie from Costic Engineering. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. I was here before this board, I believe it was the February meeting, introduced a project. I can briefly go over some of the updates since our meeting. We received comments. You see that?
Yeah.
And for those of you who don't know, there's a copy of this, should be in your records.
So we did receive comments from village that is on the board. We revised the plans based on those comments. A lot of them were technical in nature, related to stormwater, landscaping in the fire retention area, widening of the access driveways, changing where a driveway terminates in relation to a building. And one of the comments we didn't receive as well was related to architecture. We had spoke last time that there are going to be metal buildings, metal roof, storage units, and architecturally, we had kind of considered colors similar to what, I'm sorry, blanking on the name, Kittleberger did on the other side of Orchard, which has the black metal, kind of the first three, four feet, and then it's kind of a gray metal, the rest the way up, as well as the roof, and a white overhead doors and a man doors for each lot as well. So we revised the site plans, we revised the SWIP, sent that back into Aaron. Haven't received any additional comments from the village as of yet. On top of the county confirming that the zoning board should be lead agent, we also worked with Aaron and submitted to the interested agencies that were listed on the long form EDA. And we got responses back on those, that again, they agree that the village zoning board should be lead agent. So from that perspective, I believe we've satisfied that requirement. Have you answered any questions the board has? Thank you.
Members of the board, any question, comments, or thoughts?
They're telling me for a loop when you sent this picture.
Yes.
Yes.
That building's huge.
Yeah, and again, that's the largest one. We thought we'd represent, you know, the maximum. But they are, they do vary in size. So that is building A on your site plan, which is the most western building. The other buildings will be the same color, the same style, just smaller.
But these are strictly, they look like storage.
Yeah, they're, they're storage, flex office, I mean, as we discussed last time, any tenant that comes in, who's going to have to work with Aaron and the building department, they're flexed for that reason. Somebody could store their boat over the winter. It could be plumbing, full stores, surplus materials there.
So you're saying you just, they can lease, or rent just one?
Yep. Or it's flexible, that if somebody has a more need, they could, they could rent three bays, they could rent four bays. So it's flexible in that way, it's modular in a way that they can take down walls if they need to, and the plumbing is being set up in a way that it can be plumbed for each individual unit if needed.
No windows?
No, no windows. Again, it's, I believe it's an 18-foot overhead door, which does have windows on it, and a man door, and I don't know at this point if they're going to put a window, any man door, or a solid... And I don't know at this point if they're putting a window, any main door, or solid. I believe we discussed, you know, there is going to be some landscaping that's installed throughout the site. And we are proposing to maintain the hefty tree buffer along 104. I drive by there quite a bit, you know, coming to and from work every day, as well as going down Orchard whenever I go over to 250 to get gas. And it's pretty tucked back. I think from a public perspective, it's not going to be, it's not going to be Xerox, for example. It's not going to be that noticeable. We feel it'll blend in, especially with the colors. You know, it's not going to be anything that wouldn't fit the character of that district.
So you say maintain it. There's additional planting trees or anything?
There are some landscaping proposed, mainly within the buyer retention areas. You know, and I think the developer could, you know, add more landscaping in the future. But again, it's the trees that buff, you know, that are right now on 104 in the right way. Those are all going to stay and then back to the buffer.
And the area coming out to Donovan is going to be mowed or cut?
Yes, it'll be maintained.
So as you drive by it, you will not only see Kittleberger's place, as you continue going on.
Correct.
You're going to see this one. Basic structure is going to look about the same, except for those overhead doors that I see there.
And they won't have a loading bay that the.
They won't have a loading bay. But they will be black of two or three feet on the bottom, whatever that is.
Yep.
And then gray above that.
Correct.
Questions from anyone else on the board?
So each bay in the building is 15-foot wide.
Correct. Minimum, yes. Is there a wall in between those two bays?
Uh, I don't have the site, I do the site. I'm, sorry, I'm blanking on it. I believe, I believe the dimension is, I believe it's third of feet wide is the bay width.
So then.
So you're going to have two doors.
Yes, it's two, yeah, sorry, it's two doors per unit. I misspoke, it's two doors per unit, yeah. So it'd be, yeah, the dividing line would be between two doors. So correct, that's how it's, so I misspoke. So in this instance, it'd be one unit's two doors.
So every unit has two rollups and two main doors?
Uh, correct, that's how we currently have it shown, yeah.
So how many separate units are in this building that we're looking at?
Uh, this building A is 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8.
That's what I counted when I counted two at a time, all right.
Correct, that's why I was confused there.
And these are, you know, advance from the plans that they received from the building manufacturer.
Yeah, this is curiosity, there's no requirement on this, but is the roof going to be metal?
Yes.
I have a question for Aaron. Does the village acquire like a property maintenance agreement with all the stormwater facilities and all that stuff?
Okay.
And that'll be put on the owners, for their responsibility to be signed off before, before we get forward. Yeah, I just. I just want to.
How sure?
Yeah. Good question, make sure that it's on the record, yeah.
And I think you guys said last time, every unit would have water, a sewer connection, a separate electric meter, and then a separate gas meter.
Correct, yes, yep.
All right, so, so the largest unit is going to have 16 gas meters. 16 electric meters.
No.
Eight. All right, what if somebody wants to subdivide that? And says, oh, I want a 15-foot bay. They get no water, no sewer, no electric, no gas?
I don't know, that it could be subdivided smaller than the third. Again, that's a question for Aaron. I don't know, I don't know the rules of, you know, the Village Webster Code. If somebody was just going to put, you know, carpet remnants back there and isn't leaving it, I don't know what the village would allow. But the way it's set up now, it's minimum, the utilities set up reach you there.
I'm just confused on the two doors per unit.
Yeah. Yeah, but the point, if you're not going to subdivide, I think.
Why do you need two doors if I have just one?
That's the, that's the building plans that are provided to us that way. Again, I can, I can't, I don't.
To be honest with you, for safety reasons, I'd rather see one door in the front per unit and one door in the back for an emergency type access. So you still have the same two doors, just one in front, one in the back. So if there was a fire in the front or something like that, where the doors were blocked, especially because there's no windows, they can get out the back. So I'd eliminate, almost eliminate the one.
The one.
The one door in the front and put one in the back.
With the landing, okay, we can, you can do that.
Yeah.
Just put a pad.
Looking at those overhead doors, it's not the most aesthetically pleasing view.
So my hearing that there's a proposal or a change that's going to take place and remove two of those doors to put one door on the back side?
I think that the main door, one main door would be taken out, put in the back.
Now it's two doors. I think they're talking about the overhead.
Talking about the overhead door.
Then I think they would remove the overhead door if you're only going to allow one overhead door per unit and put a main door in the back to enable that. But I, is that correct?
Main door.
Yeah, then they.
Yeah, just put a main door in the back.
Just eliminate an overhead door and put one main door, so it'd be one over.
So the only thing in the back is going to be the main door.
Correct.
It's not going to be an overhead, it's not going to be a second overhead door.
I don't see a need for it, you can't really, you're not going to drive out through there. So, yeah. Again, I don't understand issue with removing a door from what we're requesting from you. It's not a pad. Are you okay with that?
No, we're fine.
There's not a need, it's just not at cost, right? Yeah, we're, we're okay with removing. So it would be per 30-foot wide unit, it'd be one overhead door, one main door on the front, one main door in the back. Is that correct?
I mean, are you sure?
I mean, I guess the question is.
I mean, if you've got a landscaping company that lots are rep on unit, and maybe two overhead doors because they got two trailers to be able to back in there, now we're looking, nothing to do there.
Is there flexibility to modify if the future comeback? If there was a tenant that needed a second overhead door? Would that need a variance or would that need any extra approval?
I do it all the time. I know, but it's an industrial area, so.
Aaron, did you hear this question?
No, what's that, sorry? Could the proposal in front of you be for one overhead door per unit, but if there were a tenant that had a special need for it, would that be something that we'd have to come back to the board for? Or would that be something they could install if need be?
I'd be fine with issuing a permit, but it's up to this board if they're going to allow that. If they're telling you you can only put one on there right now, I mean, I don't get a say in whether I agree with it or not.
Right, and it goes to the flexibility of it. I mean, we don't know every tenant that's ever going to go in there and maybe most of them would be okay with one overhead door.
Right, I mean, if, in my opinion, if you wanted to put one door per, per unit now, but have it framed in to where you just have to remove that section and put a second door in, because then what if somebody wants a door plus an office in that? You know, and.
I think the original idea was is that, because the walls are going to be, we put the walls up as needed.
Right.
So if a guy or somebody wants only the 15 feet wide with a door, you know, with the 50, 60 feet, whatever that is, we don't have to have, we don't lose that space also. But we could open it up for, we're trying to make it as flexible as possible so we're not locked in. Because the walls inside can be moved to wherever.
Right. So I mean, I agree, does it look great? No, I mean, it's going to be a nice build, nice looking building. The doors are going to be facing east, but again, it's industrial, you know?
But it's no different than any of the smaller units you see with the smaller doors or brighter doors on any of the other sites.
No matter what's put there, it's going to be an improvement to what it looks like now.
Okay, now do we have a seeker issue to deal with that's still remaining on this?
Yep. Yeah, you have to.
Yep.
And, well, have you had the public hearing?
No.
Well, I want to call the last meeting a public hearing.
Did you open it up for public comment and then close it as well? I don't think we do that again.
No, fine, no position.
And I've got no negative calls or anything like that. And the sign was up. Sometimes you like, I forgot to take it down from the last meeting, but.
Are any other permits needed from the state or the county?
We'll need a speedies permit for stormwater, which we submitted as per. We'll submit for that upon approval before construction. I mean, technically, we'll need a backflow permit from the Water Authority and Health Department, but that's standard for water service. Nothing out of the ordinary for commercial development. We're not, we're not tying any develops, so no county DOT approval required. So I believe that's it. The speedies for stormwater and Water Authority and Health Department for the water and backflow.
So the speedies is just for stormwater?
Correct.
Just putting it into the ditch?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, well, it's erosion center control, it's detaining water, it's improving the quality. The state has a bunch of standards that we have to meet that we designed ours. And then it has a requirement for inspections throughout construction to make sure that the contractor is implementing the plan as it should be.
And they approved that or said they would approve it?
The state?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, well, they, we saw, it was called a notice of intent. Aaron, I believe, or Jake, signed the MS4 acceptance form. And then that gets filed with the state, we get a permit, and we have to meet the requirements of that permit. And once it's built, you do an ASBIL, and you set a form called a notice of termination again to the village. And if they find that it's all done to standards, they sign it and the stormwater permit is closed.
And then the state comes through and inspects it on some periodic basis?
Then depending on what municipality you're in, somebody should inspect it anyway.
Okay.
And that's going to be up to the owners to have somewhere. The village no longer takes that out because the expense of that, you want to.
The town Webster's been sending that out to every developer. A day after it inspected and sent to the village.
Yeah, you get, we need to report seeing if it's inspected or positive. Because it needs to be fixed or adjusted. And also, I know it's been already stated, but just putting it on the record in public that we also send it out to a third party for the SWIP review and everything else. That cost does go back to the owner.
Yes.
I think you already.
Other questions from anybody on the board? Guys? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions for anyone in the audience? Thank you. Hold on there. So have we done the seeker issue then?
No.
All right. So I, at the last meeting or the, I don't know if it was, I don't think it was part of the package today, but you should have got the full environmental assessment form. Does anybody still have that?
It was in your original packet.
Yeah.
Well, and incredibly, you probably should have gotten the part two, which is the lead agency, the identification of potential project impact. Because that's what you need to go through in order to determine whether there is any significant environmental impact. I have it on my phone.
I have a copy of the part two that's marked up, if you want to see that. For a different subject I have in my folder.
Did you submit a part, you didn't submit a part two?
No, and again, it's, you know, communication with Aaron. Some municipalities do the part two and three on their own. Some require that the applicant submit the part two and three. So, no, I did not submit it, but it is stated form. I do have a copy of it. It is our opinion that there are no large impacts.
Do you have the, I'm sure you're going to say that, of course.
Of course, yeah. And I guess it's up to anybody's interpretation what's small or moderate or what is a large.
Do you have your part two ready?
I have a part two. Again, you know, generally it's whether or not a municipality, you know, in their stand completes the, you know, answers to the questions on that part two based on their judgment.
Do you have one, Joe?
Should be in, a blank one in your packet.
Yeah, it should be all part of the packet.
I never saw it. We got the part one, but the part two and part three?
Let's start.
Can you come up here and find it for your people? Because I, I don't. Was zoning board of appeals on trial. So did she'll give you her?
She did!
All right. So, so if you take head part two and, you know, you look at, what you're supposed to do is look at that in conjunction with the part one that the applicant prepared. And then you go through each of the impacts, no impact on land. And then you go through all of it. And you decide whether there's a, either no impact, a small impact, or a moderate or a large impact. And you check the little box. And you go through one of those. And that's when, and if you, if you go in through that exercise and you don't find any moderate to large impacts, well, then you could probably conclude that there is no significant environmental impact to this particular project. So is that pages one through four in section appendix B? It should be.
One through 10.
It should be, it should be one through 10, right?
Yep.
And no appendix B. It should be a 10-page document. Now, this is not a 10-page document. What did she give?
No, that's, that's not going to be the full.
Oh, this is, oh, this is for a short environmental assessment form. But they did not submit the short form, they did the full form. So hence the long form. So hence there's a different, a different. So hence there's a different, a different one. So... Yeah, because we have the short one in our package.
Right.
Uh-huh, can't tell you that.
I have it on my phone if anybody would like to see it. I just have it under. If you just Google long form EAF part two, it comes up, the whole ten-page. And again, I apologize, I didn't ask that question to Aaron. Because, you know, it could've been something, if I'd known, I would've, I would've had the part two and three, but...
Same with me, I had to...
I'd be happy to go through these items with you tonight. Again, it is, it is my opinion that there aren't any large impacts with this project. And if there were any that could be considered large, we feel that we mitigated them with the likes of, you know, stormwater management, erosion and sediment control, and that nature. But again, I'm not gonna pressure this board for anything.
I, I do agree with them, especially with the SWIP that's been done on it and everything else, I agree that it's, it's right, same here.
So should we pull it up online? You want me to read it to you, and if you've got it?
Yes.
Let's go with it.
All right, so, so the two options are it's no or small impact may occur, or moderate to large impact may occur. So I'm gonna read you a statement, and you'll either choose no or small, or moderate or large. And then that kinda determines yes or no to the overall question to, the first one is impact on land, okay? So question one is the proposed action may involve construction of land where depth to water table is less than three feet. So I don't know the depth to water table, but I would probably say it's small.
Right.
That's my opinion.
And, and just for further input, a lot of these questions are in the long form EAF part one that we wanted to answer, so they can help you in your response. So, yeah. So I can find them.
If you look at page eleven of thirteen of the, of the... F E A F. What is the average depth of the water table on the project site?
But you left that one blank, so we don't know the answer to that question.
Oh, I did. I apologize. In the SWIP that I did, it did do soils data, and it did say it's greater than six feet to depth to water table as well as depth to bedrock.
Yeah, he's got the bedrock. He's got the bedrock one, but if you go down to D?
No. Oh.
B is...
Right. So...
They're both greater than six feet.
Right. So B is...
Yeah.
B is the proposed action may involve construction on slopes of fifteen percent or greater. Well, I don't think there's, I don't think that's him. There's, he's got zero to ten is a hundred percent of the site. So that's, in my opinion, no or small.
Okay.
C is the proposed action may involve construction on land where bedrock is exposed or generally within five feet of existing ground surface. Well, his response was greater than six feet. So that's small enough. So D is the proposed action may involve the excavation and removal of more than a thousand tons of natural material. I doubt that.
I don't think that's gonna happen.
No.
Thousand tons is a lot.
It's a bit small. E is the proposed action may involve construction that continues for more than one year or multiple phases. Is this all planned?
You guys gotta tell us that, multiple phases?
I believe, yes, I believe the first two buildings will be built, and then when there's fires, they will be built in future phases, but all per this plan.
What's the estimated timeframe to... I mean, I know it all depends on renting, but you must have a projected...
If you have two built right away...
Yeah, two right away, and then we're gonna move to the next lot based on...
Who's estimating, three years?
Yeah.
Three to four years to continue to build out?
Is that a commitment on their part, or is that...
No, I don't believe that is a commitment, I think that's the goal. I, I, you know, it's all driven by the market and...
But what I'm, what I'm dragging at here is that may be a good statement, it also may not be a good statement, because you may choose not to go forward with that, and then you have to come back to this committee and try it again.
But then I look at it as, all right, they built two buildings, and they still can't, we don't have, the rest of the land vacant, so it's not causing detriment to... Right. They only built two buildings, and then they're done, so...
What if you go forward? What if you go forward for...
You're gonna do all the site work for both lots at the same time?
No, I'm sorry, I had this... No, I, no, they're gonna do site work for lot one first, so the water service, the sewer service, the access road. And then the middle lot and the eastern lot share an access road, so that'll have to be built. But if, say, the middle lot goes in first, they're not gonna do the site work for the far eastern lot until there's a buyer for that.
The far eastern two lots, or they, and then just... You're doing the far western lots for...
First, for a timeline.
Well, generally, isn't it a one-year thing? One-year, and if they start doing improvements, then it's secured, they're saying.
Right.
Right, if they do nothing on the second lot?
Won't matter, they already started on the first lot.
They already started the first phase, so it'd already be...
And, and in my opinion, this is a small thing too, because I have subdivisions in Penfield that have been going out for twenty years, so...
But do you have to redo them?
No.
Every time they start expanding?
As soon as they break ground on the first phase, then they started their project for the one year that's been approved.
So then everything applies from the first phase to all the phases?
Yes, yes.
So... Okay, next one? Uh, we're on half. The proposed action may result in an increase in erosion, whether from physical disturbance or vegetation removal, including from treatment of, including from treatment of herbicides. So the overall area is what?
Eight acres. Eight acres. In the EAF, it states the actual physical ground disturbance, which is proposed to be about six point seven acres, again, with all three phases. And I would state that although earth-moving activities will occur, we're proposing erosion and sediment control practices to mitigate erosion or sediment leaving the site.
I don't know. I would say it's small. There is some, so... And then we have G, the proposed action is or may be located within a coastal erosion hazard area.
No.
And then H is other impacts. Do we feel like there's any other impacts that, for land?
Yeah, all positive.
So the majority, I believe, we've all said no to small. So I would say there's no, you know, adverse impact on the land section of the part two.
Couldn't go.
Do we need to vote on that?
No.
Do it all at the level. You have to go through, you know, all ten of them. So now we got part two, which is impact on geological features. So this is the proposed action may result in the modification or the destruction of or inhibit access to any unique or unusual landforms on the site. Cliffs, dunes, minerals, fossils, caves. So that's the yes or no answer.
Vote.
No.
So we got A is identify, identify the specific landform attached. So, which is a meadow, wooded meadow, so it's small. B is the proposed action may affect or is adjacent to a geological feature listed as a registered national landmark, you know? And then C is other impacts. You know, I don't see any, so two would be no. Part three of this is impacts on surface water. Part A is the proposed action may create a new water body. Well, they're creating stormwater facilities, but it's not, it's an improvement.
That's required.
Right. B is the proposed action may result in an increase or decrease of over ten percent or more than a ten-acre increase or decrease in the surface area of any water, have any body of water. The proposed action may involve dredging more than a hundred cubic yards of material from a wetland or a water body.
No.
The proposed action may involve construction within or adjacent a freshwater tidal wetland, or in the bed or bank of any other water bodies. You're staying away. The proposed action may create turbidity in the water body either from upland erosion runoff or by disturbing bottom sediments.
Nope.
F, the proposed action may include construction of one or more intake or withdrawal of water from surface water.
No.
There's a plumbing problem there, they're probably improving it.
Right.
The proposed action may include construction of one or more outfall for discharge of wastewater to surface waters. The proposed action may cause soil erosion or otherwise create a source of stormwater discharge that may lead to situation or other degradation of receiving water bodies. The proposed action may cause... Well, they're creating some discharges, but I don't think it's gonna create any degradation of the receiving water body.
We don't know that.
You wouldn't know unless you had three feet of rain in the day, and then you'll see something.
Can I, can I interrupt for a quick second? I'm gonna have to step out. I have two girls with me, I gotta get to bed for school tomorrow. I think the rest of this is just technical approvals. If something is needed, if somebody can get ahold of me, tell you I don't have my car, maybe you want to, but family first, people.
Thank you. So I would say that's maybe a small, but it's not a moderate or large impact.
And we're proposing to mitigate by doing the stormwater right here, do the amount.
Right. Hi. The proposed action may affect the water quality of any water body within or downstream of the site of the proposed action. They're gonna improve it. The proposed action may involve the application of pesticides or herbicides in or around any water body. The proposed action may require the construction of new or expanding of existing wastewater treatment facilities. And then there's other. So, then probably, most of the things are all no to small, so...
I believe you both impact.
So number four is impact on groundwater. A is the proposed action may require new water supply wells or create additional demand on supplies from existing water supply wells.
No.
Water supply demand for the proposed action may exceed safe and sustainable withdrawal capacity rates of the local supply or aquifer.
No.
The proposed action may allow the result in residential uses in areas without, without water and sewer services. The proposed action may include or require wastewater discharge to groundwater.
No.
The proposed action may result in the construction of water supply wells in locations where groundwater is or is suspected to be contaminated.
I don't think so.
The proposed action may require the bulk storage of petroleum or chemical products over groundwater or in aquifer.
We don't know that.
I don't believe there'd be...
No five hundred gallon tanks outside?
No.
There's never been anything on it properly.
Okay.
Or there won't be...
Now, there will be...
There won't be...
This is would there be?
Right.
I mean, if we get...
Oh, petroleum storage tanks?
Are you gonna have five hundred gallons of petroleum and then give it to your renters?
The proposed action may involve the commercial application of pesticides within a hundred feet of potable drinking water or irrigation sources.
No.
H is other impacts. So, again, the majority is impacts on flooding. A, the proposed action may result in development in designated floodway. I don't think so. Proposed action may result in the development within a hundred-year floodplain.
No.
The proposed action may result in development within a five hundred-year floodplain.
No.
Proposed action may result in or require modification of existing drainage patterns.
No.
The proposed action may change floodwater flows that contribute to flooding.
No.
They're improving it. If there's a dam located on the site, the proposed action...
No.
And G is other impacts. So that's probably no. Impacts on air. If the proposed action requires federal or state air emissions permits, the action may... Okay, because I'm not gonna read the rest of it. The proposed action may generate ten tons per year or more of any designated hazardous air pollution.
No.
The proposed action may require a state air registration or may produce...
No.
The proposed action may reach fifty percent of any of the thresholds in A through C above... The proposed action may result in the combustion of thermal treatment of more than one ton of refuse per hour.
That's a foul.
F is other impacts. So that's, all right, so that's a no. Impact on plant and animal. The proposed action may cause a reduction in the population or loss of individuals of any threatened or endangered species as listed to the New York State or the federal government that used the site or found on or, or over or near the site. You got, you have the letter from the state?
Well, the EAF clicked no, that there are no rare plants or animals.
Good point. The proposed action may result in the reduction or degradation of any inhabit, habitat used by any rare, threatened, or endangered species as listed to the New... That's a no.
No.
The proposed action may cause reduction in population or loss of individuals of any species or special concern or conservation needed as listed by the New York State federal government. Okay. The proposed action may result in the reduction or degradation of any habitat used by any species of special concern and conservation need as listed by the New York State and the federal government. The proposed action may diminish the capacity of registered national, national natural landmarks to support the biological community it was established to protect. The proposed action may result in the removal of or ground disturbance in any portion of a designated significantly natural community. The proposed action may substantially interfere with nesting, breeding... The proposed action may substantially interfere with nesting, breeding, foraging, or overwandering. The proposed action requires the conversion of more than ten acres of forest, grassland. Proposed action, commercial, industrial, or recreational projects only involving use of herbicides or pesticides. And then J is other impacts, so that would be no. Right. Impacts on agricultural resources. So we can probably.
Well, you can skip, so if you look at it, it's a proposed action may impact agriculture resources.
Right.
So if you're no, you can then just skip to number nine.
Impacts on aesthetic, aesthetic resources. Want me to read all those?
No, this is, the land use of the proposed action are obviously, are, are obviously different from, or are in sharp contrast to current land use patterns between the proposed project and a scenic or aesthetic resource. No, so we can now go to ten.
All right, impacts on historic and archaeological resources.
No.
All right, so we can skip that, because it's not, it's not adjacent to a historic or archaeological resource.
So eleven is impact on open space and recreation.
So now this is the probably one you got to go through because of the.
The trail.
The trail.
The trail.
The proposed action may result in a loss of recreational opportunities or reduction of an open space or designated in any adapted municipal open space, so you can say yes, so you go through these, just to make sure.
Says the proposed action may result in impairment of natural functions or ecosystem services provided by an undeveloped, undeveloped area, including but not limited to stormwater, storage, nutrition, cycling, and life habitat.
I would've said no.
Proposed action may result in the loss of a current or future recreational resource.
I don't think it's a loss to them.
It's temporary during construction, you might not even walk through it.
Right, but it's still going to be there when it's all done, true.
Right, that would get changed.
It's not, yeah, it's going through there.
Yeah, it's like the.
It might be improvement, you clean it up and have lights and people can walk at night more, it'd be safer.
The proposed action may eliminate open space or recreational resources in an area with few such resources. The proposed action may result in the loss of an area now used informally by the community as an open space resource. And then E is other impacts, so I would say that's no. All right, twelve is impact on critical environmental areas. This is proposed action may be located with, in, or adjacent to critical environmental area, CBA.
It is, it is, skip.
All right, thirteen is impact on transportation. I would say no.
No, so you can skip that.
I would, fourteen is impact on energy. I would say no.
Is it going to cause the, an increase in the use of any form of energy?
Not, no, it's less than single-family homes.
So you can skip that.
Fifteen is impact on noise, odor, and light. So.
Unlikely.
I don't see noise or odors. Are you saying, um, I'm assuming Dar, Dar, Darbs got compliant lighting?
Yes.
So I would say no. Uh, sixteen is impact on human health.
From exposure to new or existing sources of contaminants. I don't think these buildings are going to do that.
Seventeen is consistency with the community plans. The proposed action is not consistent with adopt land use plans.
No, industrial.
Yeah, reading though. So eighteen is consistency with community character.
Is it inconsistent with the existing community character?
Right.
No.
All right. So that's it.
So that's it. So now, so now.
Overall.
So now you take the, the conclusion, you do a motion whether you deem the project to either.
Have a significant environmental impact.
Or no significant environmental impact. Those are your two choices.
Okay, based on what we have heard and what we have recorded and what we have seen in this application, is there, what do you, increase or empty services? Or none?
No, there's, it said none to small or whatever.
None to small.
Motion is for consideration of project to that little, to no significant detrimental impact.
To the environment.
To the environment.
That's your motion?
Yes.
And I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed?
None.
All right.
So now the motion is for.
Right. So what we have now in front of us is the, the, I don't know if you want to call this two, or you want to call it one, but we've got. An applicant seeks preliminary and final site plan approval and proof, review and approval to develop eight point six acres in a flex business park pursuant to one seventy-five twenty-four slash twenty-five. So what we think about what we've done here is we've gone through this, we've taken a look at it, it's not going to have any significant large or even a small impact on anything. And are we willing to give it preliminary and or final approval for the eight point six acres? For a business flex park, business flex park, the, the garages that we saw built that had sixteen doors but eight spaces. And may or may not take those doors down.
All right, I'll make a motion then, preliminary and final site plan approval.
Okay, we've got a motion on the table for preliminary and final site plan approval to develop these eight point six acres for the flex business park.
I'll second that.
We have that seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed?
Thank you very much for going through that.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, for ourselves here, for you guys to even know, we don't have anything on our agenda coming up for at least the next month or the next couple of months. So you might have them up, we don't have anything right now for next month. So we may or may not have that. We'll give you notices, and we'll, we'll do the cancellation notice when they come up. All right, any other comments or thoughts as we go forward? All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
I made that motion.
Seconded, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? None. Motion is adjourned.